Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Odeon Moishe Stadium, Antay Kallaroti. The acronym is AMPAC, I'm the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 104, Class 104. What did we learn in Class 103? Well, we're starting to understand strategy, right? Preparation, right? Tactical execution in the Empire Morocco that way we can decolonize in a competent way, right? So how do you decolonize? Well, the answer to the test can be found in the embodiment of the United Nations Charter. All the Moors had to do is go back and study well sort of principles of how other territories on planet Earth have decolonized, right? So in Class 103, we were studying what's called a geopolitical strategy that Moors need to use in order to decolonize the Empire of Morocco. We're understanding that we have to come together and align our efforts, right? We must become the United States of Morocco Alliance, right? Because our opponent in this geopolitical game of chess is an actual United States of America, right? So it's not a game of physical war, it's a game of mental war, of intelligence, right? But unfortunately, Moors for decades have used what's called counterintelligence, right? Our counterintelligence has failed us because we thought we were countering the intelligence of United States of America. And the reality is this, we have not understood the common denominator between all of us, which is what? Our nationality. Everything started with our nationality. You see, Moors, if we understood our nationality, it would've got us on the right path to decolonization. The reason why we were not on the right path and did it together is because all of us are claiming some type of false title. Whether it's Moish American, or Black, Negro, Hebrew, Israelite, right, Pan-African. We got a thousand different nominee gears for ourselves. But what's happening right now? The competent Moroccan states are coming together to put together what's called standard operating procedures and reforms that where we can get on the same page and align our efforts. We can march to the same beat of the drum as one party, as one people, as one nation, one nationality. As soon as we start studying the competencies of that one nationality, which commonly known as Moroccans in the treaties, that's got us going in the right direction. The whole time, it was about our namesake. We didn't know our name. But now that we're understanding our name, now we know how to proclaim ourselves in the treaties. We can recognize ourselves in the treaties, and now the treaties can recognize us because we're making a proper claim to the treaties as parties to our own treaties. So what we're learning right now, Moors, is called a geopolitical strategy, preparation, and tactical execution in order to decolonize Morocco. What we must do with a competent pen. The pen will put an end to colonialism. But the pen can also be counterproductive to you. If you don't know what to do with the pen, it'll keep you what? On a cycle of insanity, doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result. But this time, we recognize that decolonization is just a due process of administrative reforms, i.e. paperwork, it's a paper game. And this is what Moors are learning. But more importantly, how can we come together at a round table and continue to learn from each other? It's called the WRC. The WRC, the Wazir Regional Council operates as a round table that way all Moors, competent Moors can come to one round table and collaborate and start to understand the reforms we have to put in place regarding the empire. We can start to learn how to govern the affairs of our own nationality and govern the affairs of Americans. Now we can come together and start to understand what are our obligations and responsibilities in order to govern the Empire of Morocco. Now we can come to the WRC and have a seat at the Hague of the WRC. And where's the Hague of the WRC? It is in Morocco, commonly located at the Capitol Building of AMPAC. And from AMPAC's Capitol Building, where the district is, it ripples out. That way we can all learn to sit at the same round table and reconvene the government of Morocco. Now some Moors may ask the question, "Well, we're talking about the Empire of Morocco, but is there a government of the Empire of Morocco just yet?" Well, the answer is yes, and the answer is no. From a micro perspective, the answer is yes. What do I mean? Each provincial Moroccan state represents a part and parcel latitude longitude of that state that represents the empire. Each latitude longitude, such as AMPAC jurisdiction and AMPAD jurisdiction, DMT's jurisdiction, these are Moroccan states, I'm naming it all, acronyms. Noumeka, Marou, AMPAM, et cetera. These are all territories that used to be trust territories that have been reclaimed as provincial Moroccan states. And each one of those provincial Moroccan states have the obligation to govern over that part and parcel latitude longitude of the empire. But at the same time, do we have a constitution that identifies the entire continent as being the Empire of Morocco? No, we don't have that yet. This is the reason why we need the WRC to act as an intergovernmental organization that way we can start to put into place administrators over each of the territories that have yet to reclaim the Moroccan territory, such as Alabama as an example. The WRC can provide a limited administrative responsibility to oversee the State of Alabama to help the inhabitants, i.e. the Moors, to declare their independence, write a constitution, check all the applicable boxes of statehood. So in the meantime, the WRC can provide protections, right? Reforms on behalf of all the Moors, from the East Coast to the West Coast, as we start to work with all the Moors to help them be at varying stages of advancement. So even though we don't have a constitution that says the United States of Morocco in the Empire of Morocco, so to speak, in the interim, the WRC will take the place of the Empire of Morocco's constitution for now. Because the Empire of Morocco is void of a constitution. But yet each of the individual sovereign Moroccan states are representing the empire one little latitude at a time. But the WRC allows us to all come together to look out for the entire empire. We govern together. All the heads of state sit at the round table. So as an example, the State of Alabama right now does not have a head of state, does not have a Moish head of state. But yet the WRC can provide protections for that particular latitude longitude that's still what you call a non-self-governing territory. So we'll talk about this more in the future, Moors, as the WRC becomes a value add to all the Moors. Because the WRC and the heads of state and the secretariat can assist all the Moors from the East Coast to the West Coast. It's very important to understand, we'll keep talking about this, okay? All right, let's go ahead and get into the class. Okay, as you know, AMPAC study session always opens up the Constitution. The Constitution is paramount. In order to become a member state of the Wazir Regional Council, commonly known as the WRC, you must have a Moroccan state. If you don't have a constitution that's recognized by the member states of the WRC, then you cannot become a member of the WRC. The WRC is about member states, all right? Now, will the WRC have a secretariat? Yeah, some Moors will be at work at the secretariat to assist, right, from an administrative perspective. But the WRC is really about states, right? So without a constitution, the Moors can't even become a member state, right? Because the Constitution is what recognizes your latitude longitude as being a state, all right? Okay, let's go ahead and get into the class. As the Moors know, we're still in Chapter 6 of the Charter of the United Nations of 1945. Chapter 6 is about the Pacific settlement disputes, Article 33. We've been entering now into the reading of the Declaration of Intervention that the United States International Organization wrote on behalf of Ukraine, right? So it's Ukraine versus Russia, right, at the ICJ, and the United States wrote a letter of intervention. We started going over that in Class 103. Today we'll continue with the reading, okay? All right, so Chapter 6, Article 33, is about the Declaration of Intervention. How do you settle a dispute, right? So whether it's one state versus another state, or it's one state that has several states supporting it, right? It's still a settlement of dispute. Whether it's a declaration of intervention where you got several states that come together, right? As ergo ominous parties, or it's just state on state dispute, okay? So Article 33 is how you settle disputes at the ICJ, or you settle disputes directly through your diplomacy without going to the ICJ, okay? But that's what Article 33 is about, okay? Let's continue. So the Moors know, we started reading over this Declaration of Intervention that the United States wrote. The title is International Court of Justice: Allegations of Genocide Under the Convention of the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide, Ukraine versus Russia. Declaration of Intervention, right, under Article 63 of the statute submitted by the United States of America, and that took place in 2022, okay? So we have read all the way down to Antony Blinken's letter, okay? Antony Blinken's letter. So as a recap, let's go ahead and read over the letter again, okay? So we can take it from there. Just a moment. Okay, no.
The Honorable Philippe Gaultier, Registrar of the International Court of Justice, The Hague. Dear Mr. Gaultier, for the purposes of intervention pursuant to Article 63 of the Statute of the Court in the case before the International Court of Justice: Allegations of genocide under the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the crime of genocide, Ukraine versus Russian Federation. I hereby appoint Richard C. Vissec, Acting Legal Advisor of the U.S. Department of State as Agent for the United States, and Emily Kimball, Legal Counselor of the Embassy of the United States of America as Deputy Agent. Please accept the assurances of my highest consideration. Sincerely, Antony Blinken, Secretary of State.
All right, now, you notice Antony Blinken did not put below his name which legal personality was he representing himself, right? So Antony Blinken, in his letter to the Registrar of the ICJ, he mentions the United States as a legal personality. He mentioned United States of America as a legal personality, two separate legal personalities, right? But yet, under his own name, he failed to mention who does he represent. But we all know that Antony J. Blinken, Secretary of State, took his oath to who? The United States. That's when he took it over to the United States International Organization. Antony Blinken did not take his oath to the United States of America. So therefore, when he put his name on here, he should've placed on here, "United States." But he conveniently left it off of there. You see, but why is that? It's because he's using his capital S. The capital S represents what? An organic state, the real state, the state that's named is on the contract. So he's trying to say he represents the state, but what state? He's trying to say he represents the United States of America. That's where the capital S will come into play. But the reality is, he knows that he's an agent, knows that he's the word agent? Agent, agent, agent. He's an agent himself, right? Meaning he's a representative of the United States, not the United States of America. Two separate legal personalities. So you got the United States International Organization, and then you've got the United States of America. Two separate legal personalities, right? These are the things we have to always look for, Moors. They know exactly what they're doing. All right. Let's go ahead and get into the reading of the Declaration of Intervention that the United States wrote on behalf of Ukraine. All right, let's go ahead.
Declaration of Intervention of the Government of the United States of America pursuant to Article 63 of the Statute of the International Court of Justice. To the Registrar, International Court of Justice, the undersigned being duly authorized by the Government of the United States. One, on behalf of the Government of the United States, I have the honor to submit to the Court of Declaration of Intervention pursuant to the right to intervene set out in Article 63, Paragraph 2 of the Statute of the Court in the case concerning allegations of genocide under the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the crime of genocide, Ukraine versus Russian Federation.
Okay, so let's just pause right here. Okay, so in Section 1, it says, "On behalf of the Government of the United States," international organization that is, "I have the honor to submit to the Court of Declaration of Intervention pursuant to the right to intervene set out in Article 63, Paragraph 2," right? So they invoking what? A contract and the provisions of the contract, right? So let's go over to the contract, let's, as a refresher, okay? As a refresher. So they're invoking Article 63 of the Statutes of the International Court of Justice, right? So now we go down to the Statutes of the International Court of Justice. Here's the statutes. So they're invoking another contract, this is a separate contract. This is the Statute of the International Court of Justice of 1946. This is an addendum to the Charter, right? Because the Charter was established in 1945. The Statute of the International Court is a separate document, it's an addendum of 1946. So now they're invoking a separate contract, which United States of America is also a contracting party to this contract as well. I'm talking contract law. Everything's about contracts, Moors. So they're invoking what? A provision, an article of this contract, okay? So now you go down to, they mentioned Article 63, right? Okay, so now you come down to Article 63. Now, before we read Article 63, let's read Article 62 as a refresher, okay? That prepares us for what we're gonna read in 63. No.
Article 62, 1, should a state consider that it has an interest of a legal nature which may be affected by the decision in the case. It may submit a request to the Court to be permitted to intervene. 2, it shall be for the Court to decide upon this request.
All right, so the United States is requesting it become a party to the case of Ukraine versus Russia. But it's only up to the Court to decide whether they're gonna allow all the European states, it was told, 41 European states to become a party to the suit, right? The Court had to make that decision. But what is the Court checking for? They're checking to see if everybody's got a name on a contract in order for them to enforce contracts. So if the United States wanted to become a party, well, the first thing ICJ is gonna look at and say, "Well, what contracts gives you a right to have a legal nature, right? To have a legal nature in the case of Ukraine versus Russia?" They had absolutely nothing to do with the United States, right? But the United States of America and the United States International Organization wanted to be a part of this suit. Well, how are they invoking to become a party to it? So they say, "Okay, well, what's the legal nature that gives the permission to intervene?" Well, the United States is invoking what? A contract called what? The Convention about Genocide, right? The provision of prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide of 1948 as a contract, right? So the United States is invoking that. That's what they're saying, the legal nature is, because there's a human rights violation going on. So they want to intervene to stop the human rights violation of genocide, okay? All right, let's go on to Article 63.
Article 63, 1, whenever the construction of a convention to which states other than those concerned in the case are parties is in question, the registrar shall notify all such states forthwith.
Okay, so now we go to Section 2. This is what the United States was invoking, Article 63, Paragraph 2, okay?
2, every state so notified has the right to intervene in the proceedings. But if it uses this right, the construction given by the judgment will be equally binding upon it.
All right, so the United States wants to become a party to this case, Ukraine versus Russia. But let's say the ICJ rules against Ukraine, and the United States was backing Ukraine. Well, whatever judgment comes out of ICJ is applicable to everyone else who became a party to that same suit of that class action lawsuit. So 41 European states supported Ukraine. So whatever judgment would've came out of that case, it would've been applicable to all 42 states. Ukraine making the 42nd state, because the case would've been against Ukraine, and everybody else who became a party to it would've had the same fate, right? Why am I making an issue out of this? And why is the United States talking about it? Because an injury to one state is an injury to all states if in fact they're part of the same class action lawsuit. All right, let's take it to the board real quick before we go any further. So right now, I'm reading about the Charter of the United Nations. Chapter 6, Article 33, is about the Pacific settlement of dispute. Anytime you take it to the ICJ, that's the ultimate Pacific settlement dispute. That's the judicial settlement side of it, okay? So it's a case of what? Ukraine versus Russia Federation, all right? So what do we have here? So that case is about what? An act of genocide against Ukraine sovereignty was an act of genocide against 41 European states. An act of genocide is a violation of the periphery norms of international law, just cogits, where there can be no derivation, okay? So what's happening? The United States and the other 41 European states said that when Russia violated Ukraine sovereignty, right? They felt as though that was an injury to Ukraine states. So the other 41 European states, right, the 41 European states, right? 41 European states said, "An injury to Ukraine is an injury to all of us," right? Why is this important to understand for Moors to understand? You see, Moors, we all been acting as individual process Moors. When the United States of America or one of their several charter states had an injury towards one Moor, we could never come together as a class action lawsuit against the United States of America. One of the main reasons why we never had a class action lawsuit as Moors is because all the Moors were miseducated to jump out there and be an individual Moor. To stand on your own square. That was foolishness. That's not what other civilized people do on planet Earth. They come together as a party. They fight as a collective. So what is it Moors should learn from this thus far? What am I touching on right now? All the Moroccan states, we have to fight as states, they're fighting as states. Ukraine is a state, right? Russia is a state. It was a state, Russia, against a state, Ukraine, right? And then 41 states came together against one Russian state. So Moors have to come together in all of our states, and we have 41 states. Right now, we have six recognized Moroccan states, recognized Moroccan states. But our six recognized states can go against the United States of America as a class action lawsuit. We're stronger together. And this is what this whole scenario is all about, teaching Moors how to come together and unite our efforts and get out of the individual processes. We're failing at that. We're failing. So you must understand the concept of what's happening right now in this case. Why are we going over Ukraine versus Russia? It's so that Moors can learn how to come together as ergo ominous parties and write a letter of declaration of intervention so we can come together and so have a legal nature that bounds us and binds us together, lawfully and legally. We gotta learn how to do that, so we have to learn from what the Europeans are doing, because this is a European on European dispute. No, but Dr. Lee said, "Learn from whom?" The Europeans. So that's what we're learning. What did they do when they had a dispute, right? This is what we're learning. Okay. Back to the letter. Okay, so in Section 1, here's what Moors must understand. Section 1, let's read it again. "On behalf of the Government of the United States, I have the honor to submit to the Court a Declaration of Intervention pursuant to the right to intervene set out in Article 63 and Paragraph 2 of the Statute of the Court." Pause right there. See, that's one contract, we just read it. Now they're gonna invoke another contract. Listen. "In the case concerning allegations of genocide under the Convention on Prevention and Punishment of the crime of genocide." That's another contract. That's the United Nations Resolution regarding genocide. So they're already talking about two contracts in one section. This is what Moors got to understand about enforcing contracts. But you can't enforce a contract unless your name is on it. But this is what we gotta learn, Moors. This is a fight about genocide. The Moors have, or the Moors proclaim, we say allegedly, that the United States International Organization and their several charter colonial states are doing what? They're providing and doing acts of genocide. So how do we prove it? Well, first, we have to invoke contracts in order to bring a suit. It ain't about hearsay. We must learn what the Europeans do, they invoke contracts. That's what Moors gotta learn. It's about contract law. Okay, Section 2.
Section 2, Article 82, Paragraph 2. Of the Rules of Court provides that a declaration of a state's desire to avail itself of the right of intervention conferred upon it by Article 63 of the Statute shall specify the case and the convention to which it relates and shall contain. A, particulars of the basis on which the declarant state considers itself a party of the convention. B, identification of the particular provisions of the convention, the construction of which it considers to be in question. C, a statement of the construction of those provisions for which it contends. D, a list of documents in support which documents shall be attached. And 3, those matters are addressed in sequence below following some preliminary observations.
Okay, so Section 2. Once again, now they're invoking a different contract. Listen. Article 82, Paragraph 2 of the Rules of Court provides that a declaration of a state's desire to avail itself of the right of intervention confirmed upon it by Article 63 of the Statute of the International Court of Justice shall specify the case and the convention to which it relates and shall contain. So now we gotta go over and look at a different contract. Okay, Section 2. Article 82, Paragraph 2, the Rules of Court. You say, "Well, Rules of Court, what is that? Is that the International Court of Justice statute?" No. You have to read the words. You have to read the words. Okay, now they're invoking a totally different contract, okay? So the statutes of the International Court of Justice? Was nineteen forty-six. Now we're looking at a totally different contract? Of the Rules of the Court of nineteen seventy-eight? Right? This is, why am I pointing this out? If the United States is pointing this out, what should Moors learn from this? Follow the lead of what they're doing to enforce genocide against someone? You see, Moors, listen to me. The purpose and intent of reading Ukraine versus Russia? Is to learn what the United States and Ukraine did? To win a case regarding genocide. All we have to do is watch this political chess game that took place? And then that political chess game turned into a judicial chess game? That's the next level of our development, is political settlement and then a judicial settlement. This is the judicial settlement, how do we go about doing it? Follow what the United States does. Follow what Ukraine was doing. We mirror image what they've done in order to win our case. It's like studying a chess master game, an old Bobby Fischer game. If he won that game, would you go back and study every move he did? Yes, you would. You study his opening, his middle game, and his end game to the checkmate. That's why we're studying this. No, but Ali says study who? Europeans. But guess what? You couldn't study the Europeans until you studied yourself first. You had to understand who you were first before you could study Europeans. No use in studying Europeans and you haven't recognized who you are. So you gotta put things in sequential order. The reason why this is making sense to us now, cuz now we know we're what? Moroccans. If I'm standing here telling you I'm a Moorish American, I could never use these principles at the International Court of Justice? Or in counsel court, cuz there ain't no such thing as Moorish Americans. So all this will be moot language, it will be null and void if I was saying I was Moorish American, it will be worthless. But now that I know I'm Moroccan national and my Moroccan speech recognizes me as a Moroccan national? And my state recognizes me? As having an office as a judge, now I can enforce these laws and these contracts? Because the Moroccan states have also become a party to these contracts? Such as the prevention and punishment? Of the crime of genocide of nineteen forty-eight? The provincial Moroccan states have become party to these contracts, alright? So right here, Rules of the Court nineteen seventy-eight? Alright, there's the preamble, okay, that's the preamble, alright? So what we're gonna do real quick? The United States said what? Let's go back to the letter. The United States is invoking Article eighty-two, paragraph two, okay, so let's go to that. We need to learn about that, okay, Moors? Okay, so Ctrl F, you go eighty-two. Okay? Alright, no?
Eighty-two. One, a state which desires to avail itself of the right of intervention? Intervention conferred upon it by Article sixty-three of the statute? Shall file a declaration to that effect? Signed in the manner provided for in Article thirty-eight? Paragraph three of these rules. Such a declaration shall be? Filed as soon as possible? And not later than the date fixed for the opening of the oral proceedings. In exceptional circumstances, a declaration submitted at a later stage may however be admitted.
Okay, pause right there, so I wanted to give you an example of going directly to the contract. Okay, article eight-two, let's go back to the letter. That way you can see? All these contracts they're invoking. Moors didn't know nothing about these contracts, zero. But now we're learning. Okay, from section two again.
Section two, Article eighty-two, paragraph two? Of the Rules of Court? Provides that a declaration of a state's desire to avail itself of the right of intervention conferred upon it? By Article sixty-three? Of the statute shall specify the case and the convention to which it relates and shall contain?
Pause, listen to me, Moors. Let, let me say something for the record. And what I'm about to say i- is not to undermine? Good brother Taj Sri Bay. I wanna preface that first, cuz AIPAC Study Session is what? An educational platform. We must study? The moves that we've made in the past, how did we lose that political chess game? Taj Sri Bay lost a political and judicial chess game back in two thousand five, right? You go back and look at AIPAC Study Session, you'll see the two thousand five case? Of the Roundtable of the Moorish American, uh, Temple Incorporated, right? When Taj brought a case against, uh, New Jersey. So in that case? Taj is trying to fight them as what? A corporation? Incorporated, right? It was the Roundtable of the Moorish American Temple, right? Incorporated. But what does section two say here? What is, what is the United States invoking? Listen, you gotta listen, Moors. Article eighty-two, paragraph two of the Rules of Court provides that a declaration of a state's? Desire to avail itself, so the state? The state? The state desires to avail itself of the right of intervention conferred upon it? By Article sixty-three of the statute? Shall specify the case and the convention to which it relates and shall contain, so if, if Taj Sri Bay? Was desirous? To win a case? Against the United States of America, what is it that he should have been invoking? He should've been invoking his state? Not a corporation. You understand what I'm saying? So I thank the good brother Taj, I know he's done his best to try to fight the good fight, but the reality is this? We all been miseducated. And that miseducation has created indoctrination that we thought it was the right way to do it. And we were wrong, and we have to admit that. We're learning right now what other competent civilized people do on planet Earth? Who understand international law in order to settle a dispute. So if you're desirous, you're desirous, right? If you desire? If you desire to avail yourself a right? Then you need what? A state. It's the only way to defeat the United States? Of America, doesn't that make sense? Okay, I had to point that out, so we have to always learn. Don't think Bobby Fischer, the chess player, didn't go back and study the games he lost. You think he didn't go back and study him? You darn right he went back and studied, he hated to lose. If he lost, he recognized he didn't get beat by his opponent? He beat himself. He blundered a move. You understand what I'm saying? So the Moors have been blundering moves? Right? We've been self-defeating. The United States of America hasn't been defeating Moors, we've been defeating ourselves. We didn't learn how to play political chess. We just jumped on the board, started moving pieces around, thinking we knew what we were doing, we didn't know what we were doing. We were fighting with checker pieces instead of chess pieces, thinking we were playing chess, but we were really playing with checkers? Against a grand master of chess, which is the United States International Organization. Keep in mind, the United States of America and? The United States International Organization has basically been in all kind of diplomatic? Uh, scenarios? Since seventeen seventy-six? Seventeen seventy-six, they declared their independence and went to war with Great Britain in seventeen seventy-seven. So they've been dealing with state-on-state disputes? Since seventeen seventy-seven, so that's seventeen seventy-seven to eighteen seventy-seven? Eighteen seventy-seven to nineteen seventy-seven? Nineteen seventy-seven to the year twenty twenty-three, so that's about two hundred and fifty years. You think they aren't grandmasters at this by now? And Moors thought they was gonna go at the United States of America as one single Moore? And defeat the United States of America one single Moore? All by his own. This, this is asinine. But we could've came together as Moors and we understood international law, good brother Il Malik? Coming on as Malcolm X was on his way to the United Nations? He was already there, he was working on the proper steps. What have the Moors learned from good brother Il Malik, since we like to say he had an Il in his name? We learned nothing. Section two, part eight, particulars? Of the basis of which the declarant state? Considers itself a party to the convention, so who's a party to the convention? Who's a party to the con- who is a party? To the convention? The state is a party. Not the individual Moore. The state is a party to the convention. What convention? The convention about genocide. The prevention and punishment on the crime of genocide nineteen forty-eight, the state is a party to it. Not the individual Moore tomorrow, or it's genocide, you just can't scream that out loud, only your state can say that. Okay, section three.
Those matters are addressed in sequence below following some preliminary observations.
Okay, why are we reading this, Moors? So we can learn how to play a political chess game of understanding how to enforce what? Contracts? Through what? States. So we can enforce what? Genocide against who? The United States of America. So our states is bringing the suit, not the individual Moore? It's state-on-state dispute, that's why we're reading this. We're learning this Bobby Fischer chess game that's being played on a world? Stage.
Preliminary observations. Four, on February twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-two? The government of Ukraine instituted proceedings against the Russian Federation regarding? A dispute? Relating to the interpretation, application, or fulfillment? Of the nineteen forty-eight Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide? Genocide Convention or Convention? Five, in its application instituting proceedings? Ukraine contends that? The Russian Federation has falsely claimed? That acts of genocide have occurred in the Luhansk and Donetsk Oblast? Of Ukraine? And on that basis, recognized the so-called Donetsk People Republic? And Luhansk's, Luhansk's, I think it's Luhansk People? Republic? And then declared and? Implemented a special military operation against Ukraine? With the express purpose of preventing and punishing purported acts of genocide that? Have no basis in fact. On the basis of this false allegation, Russia is now engaged? In a military invasion of Ukraine involving grave and widespread violations of the human rights of the Ukrainian people.
Alright, pause right there. Okay. Thank you, no? Preliminary, preliminary ob- observations. Section four. On February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two, the government of Ukraine? Instituted proceedings against Russian Federation? Regarding quote, "a dispute?" Relating to the interpretation, application, or fulfillment? End quote? Of the nineteen forty-eight Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide? Quote, "Genocide Convention," unquote? Or Convention, end quote, right? So? Why am I reading this again? Listen, Moors. Did it say, um? President Zelensky versus Putin?
No.
No. Did it say, uh, uh, Kendrick Bay versus, uh, uh, Joe Biden? No, did it say Kendrick Bay versus, uh, Sheriff such-and-such? Moors have been bringing disputes towards individual names. You know why we were doing individual names versus a person's individual name? Cuz we were never talking, taught about statehood. You won't see Putin's name. You won't see Zelensky's name, that's the president of Ukraine, it's state-on-state dispute. It's two persons. But who are the persons? The persons is not Zelensky versus Putin, the persons is who? Ukraine versus Russia, those are the persons. Listen again. Preliminary observations, on February twenty-seven? To twenty twenty-two, the government of Ukraine, that's a state? Instituted proceedings against the Russian Federation, that's a state? Those are two persons in international law. They got to be. What have we learned from this already? Ain't about you putting personal names on here, it's state versus state. Continue the reading, it's about a dispute, so a dispute between who? Two or more states. And then they started invoking the contract again, what? What contract? Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide. I, I, I'm taking my time, Moors. No, you should've just reading through this, don't the heck we're reading. You must understand the concepts here. Anybody who plays chess, right? You, you got? There's three elements? Before you can start playing a game. What's the first element? First, you need a dang-on chessboard. You ever seen anybody playing chess without the chessboard?
No. No.
What's the second element? You gotta set up the pieces correctly. What's the third element? Well, you gotta have those verses, there's these colored pieces and these colored pieces. In this particular example, black and white pieces? To make the distinction between two or more states. This is one state, white pieces, versus this state, black pieces. This is? Ukraine versus Russia. Statehood. But first, they had to have three elements. Chessboard first. What's that? That's the foundation administrative reforms to be a state in the first place? And all the other boxes they had to check? This is what the United States is building up to, they talking about all these contracts? Then they set up their pieces to engage. First, they're invoking contracts? As states? They're desirous of an intervention to settle a dispute. The, the, the name of the game is chess, it's stuck in well-settled principles of how these pieces can move and how you gotta set them up and? What do you play on? You play on a chessboard. Moors didn't have a chessboard. Moors, you might as well say to Moors, just? We have a board, but we got chess pieces, we thought we had chess pieces moving on top of this right here. Here we go, here's Moors right here, yeah, man, I'm gonna set them up. Y'all ready to play? I'm gonna put it right here, right? We gonna set it up? And I'm gonna put all my pieces right here, I'm gonna get all set up right here. Yeah, I'm gonna whip your butt today, man, yeah, we gonna play chess today, man. You say, okay, your, your turn, yeah, I'm gonna open up this king. Well, what square are you on, man? I don't know, y- your turn. There's no, there's no squares, there's no board, how you gonna get into a competition with someone, there's no square, you don't? You don't even know where the bishop is? You're just imagination? So incompetent? That's what we've done, we thought we was playing? With competency and we were not. This is what Moors gotta understand. Put these pieces back where they belong. Thank you for your patience. As I start to give Moors more illustrations? Of the foolishness that we've dealt with as a people? We've done this to ourselves, Moors. We've done this to ourselves, don't keep blaming the colonists. No, but Ali says study yourself. Then study the Europeans. Okay, section five.
Five, in its application instituting proceedings, Ukraine contends that? The Russian Federation has falsely claimed? That acts of genocide have occurred in the Luhansk and Donetsk Oblast of Ukraine? And on that basis, recognized the so-called? Donetsk People's Republic? And Luhansk People's Republic? And then declared and implemented a special military operation? Against Ukraine? With the express purpose of preventing and punishing purported acts of genocide? with the express purpose of preventing and punishing purported acts of genocide that have no basis in fact. On the basis of this false allegation, Russia is now engaged in a military invasion of Ukraine involving grave and widespread violations of the human rights of the Ukrainian people.
Okay, pause. So what's the low hanging fruit here? What is Ukraine using in this case?
Genocide.
Genocide. And genocide is based on what? Human rights violation. The easiest suit to win in court is a human rights violation. Even though Ukraine could have taken Russia to court and, and hit them with all kind of different suits, all type of counts. They chose the lowest hanging fruit, which is what? Genocide. Which is a human rights violation, a crime against humanity. The easiest suit to win at the ICJ or through your counsel court is human rights violation. That's what you gotta understand. It's all about human rights. Section six.
Six, in particular, Ukraine contends that the Russian Federation's actions are inconsistent with its obligations under the Convention. The Russian Federation's declaration and implementation of measures in or against Ukraine in the form of a special military operation declared on twenty-fourth of February of twenty twenty-two on the basis of alleged genocide, as well as the recognition that proceed the military operation is incompatible with the Convention and violates Ukraine's right to be free from unlawful actions, including military attack based on a claim of preventing and punishing genocide that is wholly unsubstantiated.
Section seven.
Seven, as contemplated by Article sixty-three, paragraph one of the Statute of the Court, the registrar by letter dated March thirtieth of twenty twenty-two duly notified the government of the United States as a party to the Convention that in the case concerning allegations of genocide under the Convention on the prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide, Ukraine versus Russian Federation. The Convention is invoked both as a basis of the Court's jurisdiction and as a substantive basis of the applicant's claims on the merits. In particular, the applicant seeks to found the Court's jurisdiction on the compost, uh, com- compromissory clause contained in Article nine of the Genocide Convention asks the Court to declare that it has not committed a genocide as defined in Articles two and three of the Convention and raises questions concerning the scope of the duty to prevent and punish genocide under Article one of the Convention. It therefore appears that the construction of this instrument will be in question in the case.
Section eight.
Eight, by this present declaration, the United States avails itself of the right to intervene conferred upon it by Article sixty-three, paragraph two of the statute. This Court has recognized that an interve- intervention based on Article sixty-three of the statute is an incidental proceeding that constitutes the exercise of a right. The United States' right to intervene in the present case arises from its status as a party to the Genocide Convention. Nine, the Court has recognized that the proper construction of the Genocide Convention is of paramount concern to all states' parties. As the Court has previously observed, states' parties adopted the Convention for a purely humanitarian and civilizing purpose, recognizing that the Convention has as its object on one hand, on the one hand, to safeguard the very existence of certain human groups and on the other, to confirm and endorse the most elementary principles of morality. In this case, in this sense, states' parties to the Genocide Convention do not have any interest of their own. They merely have one and all, a common interest, namely, the accomplishment of those high purposes, which are the raison d'etre of the Convention. Such a common interest in the view of the Court indicates that the provision of the Convention are obligations urga amas parties. Moreover, the prohibition on genocide is a peremptory norm of international law, just cogits. In this regard, all states' parties have a significant interest ensuring the correct interpretation, application, or fulfillment of the Genocide Convention.
All right, so what are we learning in section nine? This, this is a very important paragraph.
Yeah.
It's, it's unpacking a lot, right? Okay, section nine. The Court has recognized that the proper construction of the Genocide Convention is a paramount concern to all states' parties. So anyone who became a party to that contract has a right not only to invoke it for their own self-defense, but anyone who becomes a party to that contract also has to look out for other states on planet Earth whose human rights is being violated. So it becomes an obligation for all states to look out for other states who are being violated by a belligerent state. You see? Why is this important for Morse to understand? Cause the United States of America has made themselves obligated and responsible not to violate the sovereignty of a Morse Moroccan state. Because if they violate our sovereignty of our state, then that is an attempt of genocide. Because they're violating our state's sovereignty and the nationals of that state. You must understand what's happening here. This is how we need to start looking at this. Look at, look at how the United States is standing up saying, "This is a violation of genocide." Well, it's good. Let's keep studying what the United States defines as genocide. How do they make a case of genocide? Let's learn how they look at genocide and they use these same words against them. But what is it the Morse meaning in order for us to be to say they're genociding us? First, we need a state to say they're genociding what? The state, cause the state is a person. The state is sovereign. And the national of the states is a human rights violation. But the first thing is happening, Russia was violating the sovereignty of Ukraine. One person, Russia, was violating the other person, Ukraine. Those were two people. Persons in international law. States are recognizing what? Persons in international law. So it was two persons. And those persons are responsible for the nationals of their state. Section nine. The Court has recognized that the proper construction of the Genocide Convention, the contract, is a paramount concern to all states' parties. As the Court has previously observed, states' parties adopted the Convention for a purely humanitarian and civilizing purpose, recognizing that the Convention has as, quote, "its object on, on the one hand, to safeguard the very existence of certain human groups and on the other hand, to confirm and endorse the most elementary principles of morality," end quote. So the United States wants to talk morality? Good. We can't wait to see that. You gotta understand what's happening here. We'll flip these words on them when we take them to counsel court and take them to the ICJ. We'll say these same words. To say that they were parties to the Convention and they made a promise to protect the morality of Moroccan states and protect the morality of all states on planet Earth. So you're trying to say, but what about the United States of America's morality? Oh, that's a good question. When the United States of America is a state, has already re-agreed to contracts. What contracts? Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-seven, Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty-six, Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty, and the Act of Agraris of nineteen oh-six. And in all those contracts, they said that they are subordinate in the contract. So their morality is based upon them being a good neighbor, a good tenant in the jurisdiction of the Empire Morocco. The morality is that they abide by the contract while they have an extended stay in Morocco, according to the contract of the treaties. So their morality is to cohabitate with Moroccans and respect each other's human rights. That's where the morality comes in. We respect each other as good neighbors. No different you living in your neighborhood. You just respect your neighbor that live next door to you. It's that simple. Don't overthink it. All right? But if the United States tries to genocide us, an attempt to genocide or act of genocide, conspiracy to commit genocide, then genocide, just genocide. They try to prevent us from making our substantial claim to our own homeland. If they try to keep the landlord from proclaiming he's landlord, that's an act of genocide. That's a question of morality. They will be in violation. All right? Section nine. And let's start to sentence here. In this sense, states' parties to the Genocide Convention, quote, "do not have any interest of their own." They merely have one and all, a common interest, namely, the accomplishment of those high purposes, which are raison d'etre of the Convention, end quote. Right, so it's, it's the high morality, right? That states don't violate other states' sovereignty and human rights. That's where the high morality comes in. All right? Continuing. Such a common interest in the view of the Court indicates the provisions of the Convention are obligations urga amas. Remember what I talked to about urga amas? That means trespass. So when you give notice to someone that they're trespassing, they have to stop. They have to cease and desist their trespass against you. That's urga amas. But when you, that's urga amas principle that you're saying. But when you come together in several states, it's called urga amas parties. So forty-one, forty-one European states said that Russia's uh, attack on Ukraine was a violation of the sovereignty of all forty-one European states. They were saying they were injured as well. You have to understand what's happening. How were they injured? Because they said an attack on that one European state was an attack on all the European states. The sovereignty of European states. Keep in mind, what was Russia's concept? They basically want to get back to the USSR, right? Which embodied a larger territory. Ukraine at one time was a part of the USSR. So Russia's trying to reclaim those territories again. Right? So now that's a trespass against Ukraine. So all these forty-one states right here are saying Russia is further, moving further and further and further westbound. So that's a trespass on all the other recognized European states, such as Ukraine as an example. So they're saying Russia, Russia is trespassing on Ukraine's sovereignty of their land. And now the other European states are concerned. Why? Because Russia gonna keep going westbound and westbound and westbound. Potentially, I'm just, just saying. Based upon what they've done thus far, right? So those are at least the allegations, the political thing they've been talking about, right? So this is what you have to understand why these forty-one states got involved. Okay? So what's, okay, let's apply that to Morse. The United States has claimed fifty-plus territories in Morocco. So the same thing that the United States is claiming that Russia's trying to do to Ukraine and Europe is the same thing the United States did in the Empire Morocco. They have encroached going westbound across the Empire Morocco. Conquering lands, under conquest. Colonialism. Right? So the same thing that the United States proclaims as an, an allegation against Russia, what Russia's trying to do, is the same thing the United States has done here in the West. So right now, Morse have to come together under what's called urga amas parties to say that the United States is doing what? Trespassing against our rights, our sovereignty of our states. Everything starts with the state first. Not you as the individual more. It's an encroachment and trespass against our state. An attack on our state is an attack on all the nationals. It's like if you mess around with it, uh, if you, if you find some ants outside, right? There a couple of ants run around outside and you go mess around with that ant holding, wow, here they come. So the ant heel represents the state. You mess with the state and now the nationals come out to protect the state and the state protects the nationals. Right? That's what you gotta understand. It's all about the state, Morse. Okay, section ten.
Ten, the United States views on the questions at issue in this case are further informed by the United States' long history of supporting efforts to prevent and punish genocide. During the following World War Two, the United States played an instrumental role in establishing the International Military Tribunal at Nuremberg and prosecuting those responsible for serious international crimes committed during the Holocaust through the International Military Tribunal and subsequent US military tribunals. The Nuremberg trials served in many respects as a catalyst for states to negotiate a Convention addressing the prevention and punishment of genocide. The U dot S dot delegation actively participated in those negotiations and its contributions helped shape the final text of the Genocide Convention. The United States ratified the Genocide Convention in nineteen eighty-eight and in the years thereafter, supported the establishment of international and hybrid criminal tribunals with jurisdiction over genocide and other serious international crimes. The United States is one of the only parties to the Genocide Convention to have publicly invoked Article, uh, eight in calling on the United Nations to address genocide in the territory of another contracting party. The United States accordingly has determined that it is necessary for it to intervene in this case in order to place its views on the construction of the relevant provisions of the Convention before the Court.
Okay, pause right there. What's happening? You see what the United States is doing? They're telling on themselves. They saying, "We know all about genocide." We know what it is to be the, the plaintiff. We know what it is to be the defendant. We know how to represent a plaintiff. We know how to represent and respond it. We, we know everything from A to Z about genocide. So therefore, the United States can never proclaim ignorance of the law. They cannot proclaim what's called plausible deniability that they don't know about genocide. You see, we use these words against them. We say, "Well, the United States is acting ignorant like they don't know what genocide is." Look what they say they are. They say they're the foremost expert in the enforcement and the prevent, prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide. They even went so far as to say they set up courts after World War Two and started to prosecute Germans or anyone who had any involvement in the Holocaust. Right? This looks very bad on them if, in fact, they try to continue to genocide provisional Moroccan state in the Empire Morocco. Don't ever let the United States fool you. When you send your documents to them, your mediation, arbitration, and counsel court orders to them, everything you send them, they know all about every step you took. Their grand masters in understanding genocide, acts of genocide, how to bring a suit against someone. Not just a suit, but they even set up courts and prosecuted Germans after nineteen forty-five. They will have no plausible deniability when the Morse start to enforce counsel court against them for acts of genocide. You must understand what's happening here. They're telling on themselves. They, they want to prosecute Russia so bad that they're exposing their hand, that way Morse can see what we need to do to put it to our case against them. You gotta see what's happening. When I say against them, what am I talking about? A geopolitical chess game to decolonize based upon human rights violations and acts of genocide. When you're decolonizing, what does that mean? You're trying to get rid of a, a, a conquering power, a colonial power, right? Someone who's controlling your land through use of force and coercion. Right? What does decolonization truly mean? In order to decolonize, what ultimately what happens? Your government now is sitting in the seats of governments. That's what decolonization is about. That your government is now governing over your own people. And that the conquering party, the colonists, no longer enforcing their jurisdiction of their civil and criminal courts. or their, their, uh, police authority against you. So right now, the Moors are decolonizing as we speak. The United States will be prohibited, and there's several charter colonial states will be prohibited in utilizing their courts or their police against Moroccan Moors. That's, that is the ultimate understanding of decolonization. It's about jurisdiction. Who has the civil and criminal jurisdiction over you? Okay? Moors have to go back and read this again. It's really good information, especially in the small print. That's good information. The United States starts to tell on themselves all the cases they was involved with in helping someone to stop genocide. Right, they would have represented of all these particular cases, you gotta go back and read it yourself, okay? We won't get into the footnotes today. Okay, section eleven.
Eleven. The United States, as a non-party to this case, intends to present its views to the court on the issues of construction of the convention relevant to the determination of the case, including the construction of the promissory clause in Article nine in accordance with Article sixty-three of the statute. The United States recognizes that by availing itself of the right to intervene under Article sixty-three of the statute, the construction of the convention given by the judgment in this case will be equally binding upon the United States. Twelve. In addition to the matter set out above, Article eighty-two, paragraph one of the Rules of Court, further provides that a declaration of a state desiring to avail itself of the right of intervention conferred upon it by Article sixty-three of the statute shall be filed as soon as possible and not later than the date fixed for the opening of the oral proceedings, end of quote. In accordance with that requirement, this declaration has been filed at the earliest opportunity reasonably open to the United States.
Okay, so what's happening in section twelve? Listen to me, Moors. Let's say the United States is attacking, right, or injuring one of our provincial Moroccan states. Well, how do the other Moroccan states get involved? When we write a declaration of intervention, but who do we actually submit that declaration of intervention to? We, we, we give it to the counsel court of that particular provincial Moroccan state. You gotta understand, they're, this letter, they're giving it to who? The registrar of the ICJ court. Similar to like the clerk of the court. So all the Moroccan states come together, right, as an example? All these are Moroccan states. So let's say the, uh, United States or the state of Georgia is doing something to injure the sovereignty of Alodim Moors Pradium Ante Georgia, right? Which is a modern provincial Moroccan state in the Empire Morocco. Well, this one state has a dispute now based in some act of genocide itself. If the other five states, one, two, three, four, five, wanted to come and support AMPAD acronym, then we would write a declaration of intervention, the other five states, right? Or write a declaration of intervention and give it to the counsel court of AMPAD. And AMPAD's counsel court would then take a look to make sure that all these Moroccan states, one, two, three, four, five, are all been parties to the contract, let's say, of the prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide of nineteen forty-eight. All these Moroccan states, one, two, three, four, five, would have to be parties to that contract. In order for them to say, we also want to be a part of the suit, class action lawsuit to represent AMPAD. You see? But what else gives us the right to come together as erga omnis parties? All six of these states will be erga omnis parties because the state of Georgia, right? Is trespassing against AMPAD. What gives us a right to come together in advance? What gave us a legal nature to come together? Okay, listen. The convention in the Empire Morocco, the Wazir Regional Council, and its one hundred and eleven articles, but in the preamble itself, right? It talks about our right to come together, right here. Okay, so let's read right here, no more.
Emphasizing that the combined efforts of states to any dispute can be expressed through a joint declaration of intervention as erga omnis parties to help unite our efforts for the common defense of our interdependent states.
You see? So we already put it in the contract that all the states who become a party, right, all the states who become a party to the convention automatically have a right to invoke and petition other Moroccan states to come to their rescue, right? To come to their aid. So if AMPAD is having a problem with the state of Georgia, AMPAD can also petition these other states to become erga omnis parties to write a declaration of intervention to represent and support AMPAD. You see? So they can petition or motion help, or we could just arbitrarily say, we're gonna help AMPAD because AMPAD is also a party to what? All the Moroccan states are a party to the convention, which automatically set up in what? An obligation to help each other, to have each other's back. Well, who's the, who's the person who's got each other's back? Who's the person? Okay. These are the persons. You say, oh, man, they, they smashed up Kendrick Bay. Okay, sounds good, but who's bringing the suit? AMPAD is bringing the suit against who? The United States of America as a party, the United States International Organization as a legal personality, and the state of Georgia as a legal personality. So the legal personality of AMPAD, Alodim Moors Pradium Ante Georgia, is a legal personality. It is a person in international law. So these six persons, six persons, legal personalities, legal personality can come together against the United States of America, the United States and the state of Georgia. All three of those I just mentioned are what? Legal personalities. Right? So what you have to understand, Moors, is all about understanding how to enforce contracts through state. I cannot make that any simpler. It's not Kendrick Bay versus the state of Colorado. It's not Kendrick Bay versus the state of Georgia. It's your, it's your Moroccan state versus the colonial state. Period, it's chess, Moors. You must mirror image your opponent, you must become your opponent. That's what this is all about. Let's continue.
Case and convention to which this declaration relates. Thirteen. This declaration relates to the case concerning allegations of genocide under the convention on the prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide, Ukraine versus Russian Federation. Instituted on February twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-two by Ukraine against the Russian Federation, that case concerns the construction of the genocide convention.
Pause. You notice how they keep invoking the contract? They're not whining and complaining, man, he hit me. No, it's all about contracts. It's all about contracts, Moors. Learn how to master the enforcement of contracts. Continue.
Particulars of the basis on which the United States considers itself a party to the genocide convention. Fourteen. The United States deposited its instrument of ratification to the convention in accordance with Article eleven on the convention on November twenty-fifth of nineteen eighty-eight. The United States remains a party to the convention.
Pause, did you hear that, Moors? They're talking instructions, instead of operating procedures. The United States is telling Moors how to become a party to a contract. Listen, Moors, this is what our Moors, American teachers, then teachers, listen to this. Particulars of the basis on which the United States considers itself a party to the genocide convention, i.e. a party to a contract. Did it say Joe Biden's a party to the contract? No, it says the United States is a party to the contract. Not the individual, but the state. But in this point, they're keeping saying the United States because the United States is the representative of the state, which is the United States of America. So it's like the attorney is talking on behalf of his client. Follow me? Okay, listen. Here's what Moors should have been studying for decades. Section fourteen. The United States deposited its instrument of ratification to the convention in accordance with Article eleven of the convention on November twenty-fifth, nineteen eighty-eight. The United States remains a party to the convention. The Moors did not understand the words deposit and ratification. We have to ratify, and the only way to ratify, you gotta have three branches of government. In order to establish a state government, and then the executive branch and the legislative branch works together with a bill, then also now the bill passes through the legislative branch. The legislative branch passes the bill, once they ratify it, it passes over to where? The executive branch, the executive branch signs it into law. That's called ratification. Then you take the, the legislative act that went from being a bill, mass legislation, and you do what with it next? You deposit it. With who? United Nations Secretary in accordance with Article one oh two of the Charter. And you have a date that comes along with it. So the United States is saying on November twenty-fifth, nineteen eighty-eight is the date they did what? Deposited. And made it lawful, that way they can enforce the contract. Have Moors done that? No. The competent Moroccan Moors of their states have done it. Have Moors Americans done it? No. Why haven't Moors Americans learned about this or done this? Because you think you're Moors American. It's a false start. You didn't get out the starter's block. How you learn about something that's ratified, deposited, promulgated, when you can't even get out, get out the starter's block because you don't even know who you are? Right? Do you understand now, Moors, why they keep giving Moors insanity tests? Because they say, y'all don't know who you are, are you insane? Okay, these are instructions, let's read it again, I'm, I'm, I'm pausing here for a minute. Particulars of the basis on which the United States considers itself a party to the genocide convention. Section fourteen. The United States deposited its instrument of ratification to the convention in accordance with Article eleven of the convention on November twenty-fifth, nineteen eighty-eight. The United States remains a party to the convention. Now wait a minute. Nineteen eighty-eight, timeout. The genocide convention came out in nineteen forty-eight. Why did it take the United States forty years? Nineteen eighty-eight to finally become a party to that contract? Forty years? It's because they didn't want to be held to the standards of the contract. You see, the United States understands contract law. They say, I'm not putting my name on that so someone can hold those standards against me because I signed the contract? See, they were belligerent for forty years. So if the resolution of genocide came out in nineteen forty-eight, and they just now signing it and become a party to it in nineteen eighty-eight, that's forty years, I'm just saying, we don't want nobody enforce that contract against the United States. So you can't let these little things slip past you, Moors. It's very important to understand. But now they've become a party, guess what? The Moors can enforce the contract against them in present day. Because they're still a party to it, right? What'd they say? You see what they're doing? They said the United States remains a party to the convention, they just said this in the year twenty twenty-two. So guess who else is a party to the convention of genocide? The six recognized Moroccan states? We've become parties to it as well. So the United States of America is a party, and these six Moroccan states is a party, so now we can enforce genocide against the United States International Organization and the United States of America. You see what's happening? That's fifteen.
Provisions of the genocide convention, the construction of which the United States considers to be in question. Fifteen. The court is called on to address jurisdictional and other legal issues relating to the construction of the genocide convention in the dispute between Ukraine and Russia. In its application, Ukraine claims that the Russian Federation's declaration and implementation of measures in or against Ukraine in the form of a special military operation declared on the twenty-fourth of February of twenty twenty-two on the basis of alleged genocide, as well as the recognition that preceding the military operation is incompatible with the convention and violates Ukraine's right to be free from unlawful actions, including military attack based on a claim of preventing and punishing genocide that is wholly unsubstantiated.
Section sixteen.
Sixteen. Ukraine's application raises the question of whether the court may entertain jurisdiction under Article nine of the convention, of the genocide convention, where a contracting party commits aggression against another contracting party on the pretext of prevent, preventing or punishing genocide. Likewise, there is a question relevant to the merits of whether the obligation under Article one to prevent and punish genocide as defined in Article two, or the obligation under Article four to punish persons committing genocide or any of the other acts enumerated in Article three permits one contracting party to commit aggression against another contracting party on the pretext of preventing or punishing genocide. Seventeen. The United States intervention is accordingly directed to the questions of construction of Articles one, two, three, four, uh, eight, and nine of the convention, which are in question in the case and directly relevant to the resolution of the dispute placed before the court by Ukraine's application.
Pause right there. Listen to what the United States is saying. Listen, Moors, watch this. Section seventeen. The United States intervention is accordingly directed to the questions of construction of Articles one, two, three, four, eight, and nine of the convention, which are in question in this case and directly relevant to the resolution of the dispute placed before the court by Ukraine's application. Let me ask the Moors a question. Did the United States of America say enforce the Constitution? The United States of America is not invoking their constitution? The United States of America ain't talking about Ukraine's constitution? The United States of America ain't talking about Russia's constitution? They're talking international law contracts. All the states have constitutions, but constitutions become what? They wash, they cancel each other out. Look, Russia's got a constitution. Ukraine's got a constitution. Once you recognize each other have constitution, they cancel each other out. What do you pick up next? International law, treaties, whatever other agreements in place, such in this example, they're enforcing the genocide contract. That became the referee to point at in terms of the law. What law are they using? They're using the convention of genocide. Nobody's talking about constitutions. Once you recognize Russia got a constitution, Ukraine got a constitution, and the other forty-one European states got constitutions, they cancel each other out. What do you do next? You pick up international law contracts. Why am I making mention to this? Moors run out of money, both the constitution, like that's the remedy. That's a falsehood. That's miseducation. It's state on state dispute, so when you got two states have a dispute, both states put each other constitutions down and they pick up international law. But the Moors have been talking, enforce the Constitution, wrong concept. It shows our incompetency. Even the United States is not invoking constitutions. You won't hear Ukraine talking about their constitution, you won't hear Russia talking about their constitution. Constitutions don't have nothing to do with it once you get to an international level. They expect you already have a constitution, your constitution is about your own jurisdiction. International law governs over both states, it becomes the referee, it becomes the neutral law between two separate states. I'll say it again. International law becomes the neutral law between two states, just like a referee and a boxing ring. The referee becomes the law. It's a neutral law in the boxing ring. And both boxers recognize the referee has the jurisdiction during that dispute. You understand what I'm saying? So that's what happens when states are debating and having a dispute, they're boxing, who becomes the referee? What becomes the referee? International law becomes the law. Article one.
Article one. The contracting parties confirm that genocide, whether committed in time of peace or in time of war, is a crime under international law which they undertake to prevent and to punish. Article two. In the present convention, genocide means any of the following acts committed with intent to destroy in whole or in part a national, ethnical, racial, or religious group as such. A, killing members of the group. B, causing serious bodily or mental harm to members of the group. C, deliberately inflicting on the group conditions of life calculated to bring about its physical destruction in whole or in part. D, imposing measures intended to prevent births within the group. And E, forcibly transferring children of the group to another group.
Okay, listen, Moors, you see what the United States just invoked? Because they're saying this is what Russia's doing to Ukraine, right? Oh, but how do we flip this on the United States? Right, this is acts of genocide, the United States is invoking this through the genocide convention, right? So check it out, this is, okay, let's start the talk. Article two. In the present convention, what convention? The prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide of nineteen forty-eight, that now the United States is a party. Right, and now Moroccan Moors, Moors states are a party, listen, article two. In the present convention, genocide means any of the following acts committed with intent to destroy in whole or in part a national, ethnical, racial, or religious group as such. Right? A, killing members of the group. B, causing mental harm to members of the group. So right now, the United States is causing mental harm to Moors. Because Moors have been trying to stand on their square. Even the Moroccan Moors of the Moors states are standing on their square of statehood. The United States and their several charter colonial states was still trying to do what? Use coercive measures to give you mental harm, to frustrate you. Right, to confuse you, to make you think that you are insane. That's mental harm in all various forms, right, of colonialism, because that's a tactic of colonialism, to make you think that you're wrong. Right, what else? Section C, deliberately inflicting on the group conditions of life calculated to bring about its physical destruction in whole or in part. What's physical? Well, that's physical, physical, and then that's mental. Mental is a part of physical as well, messing with your psyche, right? Section D, imposing measures intended to prevent births within a group. Right, so we can't give birth in the jurisdiction of our Moroccan state if in fact they're trying to prevent us from being recognized as a sovereign Moroccan state. How can your child be born in the jurisdiction of a Moroccan state if they keep pulling you back into the jurisdiction of the United States? So when our Moroccan national matriarchs give birth, that child should be born into the jurisdiction of a Moroccan state on paper. And that should be the substantive evidence, but instead, they're trying to pull that child back into the jurisdiction of the United States, so that's a what? An act of genocide. Section D, imposing measures intended to prevent births within the group. They don't want to recognize us Moroccan, they want you to keep being what? Negro, black, and colored. They want you to be African-Americans and Moors Americans. Don't think the United States doesn't appreciate the fact that Moors keep calling themselves Moors Americans. They like the fact that Moors are calling themselves Moors Americans, because they know such things as Moors Americans. They know by definition, Moors American means more subject that's been naturalized in the jurisdiction, United States of America. They know that Moors American means you still naturalized in jurisdiction, United States of America, under public law eight fifty-six, where the United States of America still got civil and criminal jurisdiction over you. Don't think they don't appreciate the fact that Moors keep giving themselves a misnomer. They making money off of Moors too, every time Moors gotta go to court, this, that, and the other, Moors are paying fees. Paying fees, you paying bail money, the city getting paid, paid off that. You, 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 you paying all kind of fees at traffic court, right? Because you don't have a license, you don't have insurance, you don't have tags. All kind of fees you paying out, when they finally slap you with those violation tickets, you end up paying them plus interest and fees, court fees. Look, the municipalities getting paid off of Moors Americans. You're paying them to subjugate you and you don't even realize it. Now, I know we're not doing it intentionally, it's not willful. It's just what called ignorance of the law. Section C, I mean, uh, uh, E, as an echo, forcibly transferring children of the group to another group. Right? So first, section D says, we can't have, we can't give birth to our children in the jurisdiction of Morocco. Then they turn around and force the child into the jurisdiction of the United States under collusion. Right? These are all acts of genocide, that we can get them on in the very near, near future. Okay? Article three, now keep in mind, this is what the United States is invoking. Look how they're telling us what to use against them. Listen. No.
Article three. The following acts shall be punishable. A, genocide. B, conspiracy to commit genocide. C, direct and public incitement to commit genocide. D, attempt to commit suicide, uh, genocide. And E, complicity in genocide.
Uh huh, I'm glad the United States knows all about it, let's continue.
Article four. Persons committing genocide or any of the other acts enumerated in Article three shall be punished, whether they are constitutionally responsible rulers, public officials, or private individuals.
Did you hear that, the United States? You just admitted that the ruler should be punished. Individuals should be punished. Officials should be punished. This is what you're invoking yourself. Let's see if you live up to these expectations and hold yourself accountable. And don't plead defense. Take your punishment, just like you're invoking right here, it doesn't say punishment, listen. Persons committing genocide or any of the other acts enumerated in Article three shall be punished, whether they are constitutionally responsible rulers, public officials, or private individuals. Let's see if the United States lives up to these standards when we bring counsel court judgments against them, okay?
Article eight. Any contracting party may call upon the competent organs of the United Nations to take such action under the Charter of the United Nations as they consider appropriate for the prevention and suppression of acts of genocide or any of the other acts enumerated in Article three.
So in other words, Moroccan Moors could petition the United Nations' organs to assist us. Right, we can petition, that's what the United States said. Go to UN to like the human rights committees, right, et cetera. There are decolonization committees, et cetera. Go to the ICJ as an organ, et cetera. Okay?
Article nine. Disputes between the contracting parties relating to the interpretation, application, or fulfillment of the present convention, including those relating to the responsibility of a state for genocide or for any of the other acts enumerated in Article three, shall be submitted to the International Court of Justice at the request of any of the parties to the dispute construction of those provisions for which the United States contends. Eighteen, the United States interpretation of the genocide convention is based on the customary international law of treaty interpretation, as reflected in provisions of the nineteen sixty-nine Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties.
Pause, now wait a minute. Once again, the United States is not invoking no constitution. Ain't talking about Ukraine's Constitution? Ain't not talking about enforce the Constitution of Russia? Oh, Russia's doing all this bad stuff, you should enforce the Constitution of Russia? No. They talking about international law, Moors. All right, listen. Section eighteen, the United States interpretation of the genocide convention, not the Constitution, but the genocide convention is based on the customary international law of treaty interpretations, as reflected in provisions of the nineteen sixty-nine Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties. That's important to understand, Moors. It's all about treaties and international law. Section nineteen.
Nineteen, Article thirty-one provides that. One, a treaty shall be interpreted in good faith in accordance with the ordinary meaning to be given to the terms of the treaty in their context and in the light of its object and purpose.
Pause right there, isn't that very rich for the, the United States to come out there and enforce a lot of treaties? Listen. Section nineteen, Article thirty-one provides that, Article thirty-one of what? The Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties of nineteen sixty-nine. Right? Says, one, a treaty shall be interpreted in good faith and in accordance with the ordinary meaning to be given to the terms of the treaty in their context and in the light of its object and purpose. Okay, sounds good, United States. Are you gonna live up to the terms and conditions of the treaties of peace and friendship? We'll soon see. Are you gonna live up to the terms and conditions of the Madrid Convention of Article fifteen, paragraph one, when the Moors are returning back to Morocco through their Moroccan states and enforcing sovereignty through their states? Because that's what the treaty says the Moors can do? Well, we'll see. The United States gonna live up to the terms, conditions of the Act of the Ceres of nineteen oh six in this one hundred and twenty-three articles? We'll soon see. But this is very rich for them to talk about the enforcement of the treaties. We shall soon see. Right? Now check this out, look at this small print at the bottom. No.
Fourteen, while the United States is not a party to the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties, it recognizes that a number of its provisions, including those in Articles thirty-one and thirty-two, reflect customary international law. Fifteen, Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties opened for signature on May twenty-third of nineteen sixty-nine, referencing Article thirty-one onward. And then entered into force on January twenty-seven of nineteen eighty, hereafter Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties.
All right, so what, listen to this. So they're invoking up here section nineteen. Article thirty-one provides that, Article thirty-one of what? The Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties of nineteen sixty-nine, yet the United States is not a party to it. So they put a small print at the bottom, they say.
Is not a party.
While the United States is not a party to the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties, it recognizes that a number of its provisions, including those in Articles thirty-one and thirty-two, reflect customary international law, so what is, see what they just told themselves? What is customary international law? Meaning whether you're a party to that contract or not, it can still be enforced against you. It's called morality law. It's called the periphery norms of international law, just coaches, now we're about to go to it until we start the closeout. Okay? So let's see what the United States was invoking. This is the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties of nineteen sixty-nine, okay? The United States is not a party to this. Why? Because it's got too many rules and regulations that the United States don't want to abide by it. But yet they know they still have to conform to it, whether they're a contracting party or not. Why? Because it's based on human rights. There can be no derogation to human rights, meaning no, there's no workaround, you can't circumvent human rights, no state on planet Earth can do that. Right, so let's go down to Articles thirty-one and thirty-two. Okay, we're going down to Articles thirty-one and thirty-two. Just a moment. Okay, no.
Section three, interpretation of treaties. Article thirty-one, general rule of interpretation. One, a treaty shall be interpreted in good faith in accordance with the ordinary meaning to be given to the terms of the treaty in their context and in the light of its object and purpose. Two, the context of the purpose of the interpretation of a treaty shall comprise in addition to the text, including its preamble and annexes. A, any agreement relating to the treaty which was made between all the parties in connection with the conclusion of the treaty. B, any instrument which was made by one or more parties in connection with the conclusion of the treaty and accepted by the other parties as an instrument related to the treaty. Three, there shall be taken into account together with the context. A, any subsequent agreement between the parties regarding the interpretation of the treaty or the application of its provisions. B, any subsequent practice in the application of the treaty which establishes the agreement of the parties regarding its interpretation. C, any relevant rules of international law applicable in the relations between the parties. Four, a meaning, a special meaning shall be given to a term if it is established that the parties so intended.
Pause, okay, so that's Article thirty-one, right, we'll, we'll read Article thirty-two in the next class, but let's, let's go back and recap really quickly about Article thirty-one, this is important for Moors to understand. Because the United States is invoking it, even though they're not a party to this contract of the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties of nineteen sixty-nine, but why are they invoking it if they're not a party? Because they know how powerful it is. Right, they're using it to their advantage because it's customary international law. Right, but listen, listen, listen to what it says. The general rule of interpretation. Section one, a treaty shall be interpreted in good faith in accordance with the ordinary meaning to be given to the terms of the treaty and their context and in the light of its object and purpose. So when a treaty is written, there's a, there's a rhyme and reason why it was written, there's a cause and effect as to why that contract was written, right? If it was an action that created a reaction of the treaty, right? So section two, the context of the purpose of the interpretation of a treaty shall compromise in addition to the text, including its preamble and annexes, you see that? So the preamble, Moors, the preamble, like I told the Moors, you must always read the preamble first and its articles. The preamble is a part of the contract, it's the first page of the contract. Right? Now, why is this important? Why am I pointing this out? Because we're talking about the United States that enforced the treaty provision, the terms and conditions, right? Okay, as I'm starting to close out. What do I have up here? This is the Act of the Ceres of nineteen oh six, that the United States of America and the United States International Organization is a party to it. And according to this treaty, this treaty was written in nineteen oh six, that twelve European states and the Empire Morocco agreed that the Moors could reestablish their governments again. And they set up basically seven chapters. Right? So in the preamble, right, we're talking preambles, right? We're talking preamble, because that's what they said. We're talking preamble, because that's what they said. The United States said you should be enforce the preamble, right? Okay, no, we read the preamble.
Inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order, peace, and prosperity in Morocco, and recognizing that the attainment thereof can only be effected by means of the introduction of reforms based upon the triple principle of the sovereignty and independence of His Majesty the Sultan, the integrity of his domains, the economic liberty without any inequality, have resolved upon the invitation of His Sherifian Majesty to call together a conference at Algiers for the purpose of arriving at an understanding upon the said reforms, as well as examining the means for obtaining the resources necessary for their application, and have appointed as their delegates plenty of, plenty of potentiary, the following.
So in the preamble, the United States of America agreed that the Moors could reestablish what? The, the triple principle of sovereignty and independence. What is that? Statehood. What was the next one? Enter the domains, well, to respect our laws. What was the last one? Economic liberty without any inequality. Pay me my taxes while you earn on the land of Morocco. That's what it means. So the United States wants they invoke the provisions of the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties of nineteen sixty-nine? Good, you want to talk about the preamble and follow the annexes? That's good. Well, what about the annexes? I'll start the closeout. What, what about the annex? Okay, now you come down, you figure out, what, what was the seven chapters? What was the mandate really all about? What, what was the mandate? Okay, here we go. Uh, here we go. Started who?
Who furnished with full powers which we, which were found in good and due form have in conformity with the program upon which His Sherifian Majesty and the powers have agreed, successively discussed, and adopted.
So the United States of America confirmed, and they're gonna comply to the seven chapters of this treaty. We're the seven chapters, okay?
One, a declaration relative to the organization of the police.
So the Moors get to organize the police and govern over the police. Section two.
Two, a regulation concerning the detection and repression of the contraband of arms.
We control all permits for all weapons, whether sporting weapons or weapons of mass destruction of war. Section three.
Three, an act of concession for a Moroccan state bank.
So the Moroccan Moors could establish a national regional bank from the east coast to the west coast that governs over all inferior banks, such as the Federal Reserve and the IMF, et cetera. It's about our currency, our gold, our silver, our banks, that's ran by who? Moroccan Moors. These are the obligations that the United States is talking about that people should adhere to when it comes to preambles and annexes, which are the articles. Section five, or four?
Four, a declaration concerning a better return of taxes and the creation of new revenue.
So the United States has agreed to pay taxes and whatever new taxes the Moors come up with and implement through reform. Section five.
Five, a regulation concerning the customs of the empire and the repression of fraud and smuggling.
So now we get to suppress fraud, smuggling throughout the empire. Put in any type of reforms, right? That brings back harmony within the Empire Morocco and shuts down all of this war machine theme that the United States is doing around planet Earth. We shut down the war machine because we gotta bring peace and harmony back in Morocco. That don't mean we get rid of the weapons. We just make sure the weapons are not used as bad actors. That's the difference. Or we keep the jets, we keep the planes, we keep the ships. We keep all the weapons of mass destruction, but we put it somewhere where we're not using it just for our own selfish need. The United States gotta shut this down because they're going around the world just taking over territories because they want to take the resources legally under use of force. You see? Okay, next, what else the United States is obligated to?
Six, a declaration relative to the public services and public works. And having decided that these different documents might usefully be coordinated in a single instrument, they have united them in a general app composed of the following articles.
So sec, article, uh, shall I say, chapter six about a declaration relative to public services and public work. Well, what's public services? That's the state, right? That's your three parts of government. Public works, that's your utility companies, et cetera. Everything that the government typically oversees. The United States of America and the United States International Organization has agreed that the Moors get to govern all these things. In cooperation with the United States. That must be understood, Moors. We do all these things in cooperation with the United States. Why do I say that? Because they are also parties to our treaty. They got every right to be here through the lease agreement, commonly known as a treaty contract, right? So what's my point? If the United States is invoking all of these contracts that they think is a benefit to them, then we should learn how to enforce these same contracts against them because these contracts now become a benefit to us and a detriment to them. And they understand how this works. Don't let them, don't let them fool you, okay? So we'll pick this back up in, uh, class one oh five, all right? I am with that. Here's not.